Good morning and welcome to the commission meeting for October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'm going to call our meeting to order. And note for the record that we do have a full quorum of commission members present. If you are going to be speaking from the public for this meeting, we do request that you sign in because we need your name for the public record, name and county is fine. Reminder, we have absentee voting going next door. And be mindful of the fact there are state laws prohibiting the disruption of voting and election workers and prohibiting campaigning for or against any person or issue in or near polling places, which means within a hundred feet of the front door. Copies of the statute can be found around the building, including the bulletin board outside these chambers. I'm going to ask you stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, if you brought one of these, please have it on silent mode. All right, routine business, look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved, second?
In a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Our consent agenda consists of bills to be paid, routine kind of business for the county. It's all public record, it can be viewed in the auditor's office. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on any item on the consent agenda? All right, any commissioner want to pull any item from the consent agenda? Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, call the roll, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to our regular business, we have a public hearing to consider the preliminary plan number twenty-four oh one for Evermore Estates addition in section twelve, T one oh four north, R forty-nine W. Mr. Hookman, good morning.
Good morning, I'm Kevin Hookman from the county planning department. Yes, this is a preliminary subdivision plan. The petitioner for the Evermore Estates addition is Jacob Morris. And the owner of the planned subdivision is Jokers LLC. The location of the property is east of Del Rapids. If we can go kind of down towards the first beginning of the plan, this next one down. There we go. So that kind of gives you an idea of the the plan location, a few miles east of Del Rapids. The proposed plan is twelve residential lots ranging in size from four and a half acres to ten and a half acres in size. The twelve lots became possible a few months ago when approved conditional use permit to transfer the building eligibility. So this is still agricultural land and it's using building eligibility rather than rezoning to approve this subdivision. Staff did review the the preliminary plan and it does meet the county requirements for subdivision. The county commission must approve all preliminary subdivisions plans. And the Minnehaha County Planning Commission has already reviewed the preliminary plan at the September twenty-third Planning Commission meeting and the plan was unanimously approved. And if we just kind of scroll through here a little bit more, you can see a little bit more detail. There is going to be two new streets formed and they're going to be private roads throughout the subdivision. One that'll loop through from Jasper Street to four hundred and seventy-eighth Avenue. And then there is this wildry circle right here. So the petitioner will have to work further with the highway department when it comes time to get final approvals for those driveway locations, but he they have already worked with them to use setbacks and sightline distances already. Little more detailed on the plan. See the lot sizes and a easement here for some utilities. And then you can see some of the the drainage of the plan going forward from here and a typical road subdivision. Because both roads are hard surface, I'll also note that the roads within the plan will have to be hard surfaced. And the petitioner has the option to either construct the roads prior to plating the property or to post a surety when they plat the property for the road segments that are being platted in the amount that it would cost to build that road. So those are the options they have. So today, action should be taken to approve, deny, or amend the Evermore Estates addition preliminary plan. I'm available for any questions.
All right, before we go to questions, this is a public hearing. So the order we do this is we'll take proponents so that anyone in favor of it, then go to opponents and then a rebuttal. So we will look to the proponents. If the property owner here, would you like to address the commission on this?
Good morning, Riley Reinhardt here as a representative of the owner in the project here. Don't have a lot to add beyond the staff report, just that we, like Kevin said, planning to use the twelve existing eligibility on the property. Design intent is to meet all the county planning subdivision ordinance requirements. Yeah, don't really have much else to add, I think Kevin said it well, so be happy to answer any questions though.
Okay, questions? Any other proponents? Is there anybody here that would speak in opposition to this public hearing? This zone, or I guess it's not a zoning change request, but a addition, I guess.
Preliminary plan?
Yeah. Anybody here for that, to speak in opposition? All right, no need for a rebuttal, turn it to the commission for other questions or comments, action.
Mr. Chair, I'll just make the comment that at planning and zoning, we had a little bit of conversation about just residential growth in rural areas and right to farm covenants. Just the idea that there might be KFOs or other things in the area that might wish to grow in the future and does residential growth hit against that? And so we're obviously balancing some of those interests, but I would just note that this this addition or proposed plan was again built by moving existing building eligibility. So in some sense, they're doing it the right way of of our density zoning contemplated in our comprehensive plan as existing now. But I think this is a good example to take into discussions for the next iteration of the comprehensive plan. What do we want residential growth in the in the rural parts of the county to look like? But I think this follows all the rules as we we would contemplate them. So I would be supportive, as I was supportive at the planning commission level.
Commissioner Blainberg?
Thank you. It sounds like staff recommended approval and the planning and zoning recommended approval, but I think this might be the first time that I've seen this process happen. I don't know, Joe, if you were, or Commissioner Kipley, if you remember having this process happen before, but I was just curious what the next steps are. And then also, in this process, is it similar to a conditional use permit? Are neighbors informed of this process? Or what, can you tell me more about what this looks like on your end?
And so, yes, this process is, I guess, kind of similar to the conditional use permit process. It does not have a neighbor notification like a conditional use. Neighbors were notified at the the conditional use permit to transfer these here. So they they are aware of the project and they had a kind of a preliminary preliminary plan at that hearing so that we could kind of look at what they were looking at at the time. Going forward here, it's all going to be administrative. So they can plat one lot at a time or they can plat all the lots at the same time. It'd be up to the developer to to how they want to plat these lots going forward.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, call the roll.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Another public hearing to consider the spending plan for the two thousand and twenty-four Burn Jag program. Captain Bosman, good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners, good morning. Jill Bosman, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. The agenda item this morning in front of you is a public hearing that we requested a few weeks ago be posted. An opportunity for public comment in regards to our Burn Jag, Jag stands for Justice Assistance Grant. Is a federally funded grant that is awarded to the Sioux Falls Police Department in Minnehaha County. In that joint partnership, we come up with a spending plan on how we use the resources and funding that is given to us. With that spending plan, we have an opportunity for the public to weigh in if they have any comments or suggestions they want to share with that. But I do want to say that this is a joint partnership with us and the Sioux Falls Police Department. We're very grateful to that partnership, representative with us today as well. They act as the fiscal agent as doing the direct reporting to the federal government and we are kind of a sub recipient under them for that. With that, I will ask that we open it up for public comment. There's no action needed from the commission on this item other than just facilitating this moment.
All right, so we don't have to vote?
There's no, no, there's no action requested on this one.
Interesting, okay, so we'll take proponents, anybody here to speak in favor of the spending plan for the two thousand and twenty-four Burn Jag program? Anybody in opposition? All right, it's a public hearing, it's more of a informational than it is a vote, is it, okay? My paper says roll call vote, but I guess we don't have to do one, okay? So, thank you, Captain, spend it wisely.
Thank you.
All right, consider a motion to authorize the sheriff's office to apply for the Justice Assisted Grant Program through the Department of Public Safety, Captain Bosman.
So this one again looks very similar, the language Jag, the Justice Assistance Grant. This is a similar funded program, but the state receives Jag funding as well too. The state recently received notice from the federal government that, hey, you guys can't hold on to all that money. You need to be contacting your local entities to see if there's other programs and options that they want to be doing. So the state is now offering Jag funding through their state fiscal office, allowing agencies to apply up to thirty thousand dollars. They said it doesn't matter if you already received Jag funding from the federal government originally or not, you're open to welcome to apply. So we do have a project identified where we'd be adding more in-car video cameras to our warrant fugitive vehicles. And with that funding, this would be a perfect opportunity to ask the Department of Public Safety to consider our application if we apply. So it's a similar program, it's just one is funded with us, with the city, is through the feds. This one would be through the state.
All right, public comment on this agenda item? All right, commission questions, action, this one we are voting on.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the sheriff's office to purchase a two thousand and twenty-five Chevy Silverado truck through the state of South Dakota bid holder Lamb Chevrolet, Captain Bosman.
We are very beneficial to have the partnerships with our state and federal and local entities. With this request for a two thousand and twenty-five Chevy Silverado, this would replace our SWAT equipment truck. The funding for this would be through the Office of Homeland Security. This was a project that we had applied for earlier this year, went through the approval process for our region with the Department of Public Safety and Homeland Security. It has been awarded and is to the point where we can begin to procure and purchase items for this. This part of it here is a vehicle off the state bid, so we are purchasing from Lamb Chevrolet. This truck then would, once received, we'd put a service body or storage compartment on the back that can contain all of our equipment and necessities that we need for rescue and emergency operations. With your approval, we would place the order for this Silverado truck. It's replacing, it's the current truck that we have right now is a nineteen ninety-seven Ford. It's definitely served its life. It was a surplus, I think, from the military at one point, which then went to emergency management. And then we grabbed it from them, squeezed even more out of it till it is, it is due.
All right, public comment on this agenda item? All right, questions from the commission? I have a quick question, Captain. So this is two thousand and twenty-five money, if it's delivered before January, are we authorized to take possession? Or how does that work?
So since this is, it's a federal fund, we, it's a reimbursement process is what it is. So the county pays for it, whatever fiscal year budget that it happens to be delivered, if we receive it still this calendar year, we pay it out at twenty-four and we'd make sure we get that reimbursement from the state, usually within three weeks afterwards. So that way the funds could be applied back to the budget year. It's about ninety days out is what they're anticipating from the order date. I would think it would hopefully be ease of ordering and receiving would be in January because then it's all in one budget calendar year for us.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign an amendment to the agreement between Minnehaha County and Altegg Engineers for Construction Administration of Project MC twenty-two oh seven, structure fifty-three thirty-seven one thirty. It's a replacement, good morning, Jacob.
Morning, Commissioners, Jacob Morris, Highway Department. This amendment is to honor requirements given to us by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to monitor the Topeka Shiner during construction. Originally, we under, we were under the assumption that the state of South Dakota was going to assist us with this. This program is big funded, so the state pays for eighty percent, the county pays for twenty percent. They do have staff that does this, but for this project, we are hiring a consultant to do it. So the state's still paying eighty percent of it, but we just need this amendment to add additional scope to their services.
Okay, public comment on this agenda item? Commission questions, action?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Consider a motion to accept a donation from the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, I'm not Lori Montes, but Carrie Benz from Human Services. We're before you today to ask for your approval to accept a thirty thousand dollar donation from the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. We had a conversation with them a number of months ago in regards to their inquiry of what our community could really benefit from when it comes to service providers. And so in that conversation, we really talked about the need for our community and the providers to come together to unify in its approach. There's a number of things that are listed on the memo here that kind of explain that. And having that conversation, we weren't quite sure actually where it would, where it would go if it would be funded. Happy to report that they, the president and their vice chair, or vice president took it to their board and they were approved for thirty grand. And so we're excited to accept these funds as it would allow us to schedule and coordinate training community-wide for a lot of the service providers who oftentimes don't have that opportunity to receive a lot of extra training and educational opportunities just because of a nonprofits being incredibly strapped financially and not being able to pursue that level of training as well as really trying to unify our approach and bring together how we can better serve our community members. So we're seeking your approval today to basically accept the thirty thousand dollars. We would act just simply as the fiscal conduit and pay as we go when we have those trainings. We're looking at probably having those over the course of the next year. So there is a community planning committee that we've put together, so it's not just us. We really wanted to involve the community because this really is a community effort, especially when the monies come from the community foundation. We really felt that we wanted it to be community-based, community-focused and supported. So with that, I'll take questions.
All right, public comment first, we'll take, anybody from the public like to comment on this agenda item? All right, commission action, questions? Commissioner Blainberg?
Not really a question, just more of a comment. I would like to just thank you, Carrie, for the work that you put into securing this funding and for the forward thinking for the community for, it's a, I think, a much-needed area that we could definitely give more support and so I appreciate your leadership. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve, oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, I'll second that motion, just make one follow-up comment. I just would like to thank Carrie and honestly thank our entire team at the county. Because you look at our agenda today, almost everything we've done is approved funding that we've received from other governmental or nonprofit entities to further the work, to provide services, better services to the citizens of Minnehaha County. And that, none of that comes out without a lot of background effort. It doesn't just, you know, magically appear, you know, get to just pluck it off a tree somewhere. So I really appreciate all of that. And then there's work that goes into complying with all the requirements that come along with that funding. And so there's work beforehand, there's work ahead, but we really appreciate the effort, so, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any additional comments? Please call the roll.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. We're now at the opportunity for public comment, we reserve thirty minutes for public comment, five minutes per speaker. Is there anybody that would like to address the commission?
Hello, Scott Anderson, County Planning Director. If you could turn on the Elmo, I'd like to show a couple things to, so today I'd like to just talk to the public a little bit about some public open houses that we're having and inform the commission on what we have been doing for public outreach. So we are going to be working on our two thousand and forty-five envisioned comprehensive plan and we are having some public open houses in Del Rapids on the November seventh, Brandon, November fourteenth, and Hartford on the twenty-first. So that's basically every Thursday night in October except for Thanksgiving. And I have been making the rounds to all these small communities. I've gone out to Brandon and Valley Springs. I've been handing out flyers and posting them in public places. I've met with the city manager in Hartford and Har, uh, Brandon and they will be, and they will be pushing this out through the cham, through their chambers. We've been sent, I've sent this to CCOG, they'll be putting it out on their website and their newsletter. I have worked with IT, we have this on our county website. We have this information that's going to be scrolling through the screen downstairs that's between the treasurer and the auditor's office. I figured we could capture people as they're paying their property taxes and their license plates. I have these down in our front, in our, I guess, entryway, there's some display cabinets, I have some in there. I have, I figured there'd be a lot of people absentee voting and I put some out on the table out with sample ballots, people can pick them up and take them home. In addition, I wanted to show you this. This is, and it's a little bit hard to read, or it's smaller, but this is the size of the ad that we will be putting in each paper the week before the meetings. So it, I know you could run a public, just a hearing notice, but those tend to be sometimes overlooked. This will be a little bit more visual and will be displayed for the, for the public to see. So I have yet to go, I'm going to be going out to Del Rapids. I have worked with Sheldon at the city, at the city there to put this information out. So I need to go to, let's see, Garrettson yet and work there. But my intent is to get to all of the communities, get the information out. And I have flyers for anyone else, I've been giving them to the planning commission and then we had a task force that worked with us and I sent them this information and invited them to the meetings. Then, the nice thing about the, these meetings that we have, the planning commission has set a tentative hearing for the adoption of the comp plan at their meeting in November. And all of, all three of these meetings occur before the planning commission meets. So we'll also be able to inform the public that do attend those meetings that the planning commission will be considering the the plan for adoption at their November meeting. So it all dovetails really well together. So I, I just want to put this information out there, this it'll get replayed on public, on our broadcast system. I'll probably come to you once or twice before the, these meetings again, just to make sure the public's aware of it and we'll get it out on the, on the TV, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Since this was, Scott's time was really county business, I'm not going to count that towards our thirty minutes, so. But it's still important information, Scott, I appreciate it, thank you. All right, going back to public comment.
Good morning, Mike Mathis, I work with Leah downstairs. And more than anything, I just wanted to get this on public record. I do take PTO when I come up here and speak to you guys, I just wanted to let you know that. A couple weeks ago, September tenth, I was alleged for doing illegal activity in the auditor's office as well as Leah. I have had to take calls on this and be on the phone with very upset people blaming me for breaking the law. I've had poll workers drop out and many of them have been disgruntled with me and Leah. I, I asked for proof of damage that we are doing. I've heard nothing. I look at this, at this form right here and we do everything on this form. The one thing that we do do is on these PMBs, we do ask for a physical address on line three, as we're supposed to. So a lot of these PMBers will send in with their PMB address on line three and then therefore we'll send a letter stating that we need to have a physical address on there. Well, now what a lot of them folks are doing is putting a hotel residence on there. And I have to allow that to go through, I have no choice. Leah and I, we have to let that go through. Everybody signs under the perjury of law right here. It says, I have maintained residence in South Dakota for at least thirty days prior to submitting this registration form. Well, Secretary State says that we can't do anything on that. So I have to let all of them go through. So, you know, I, I do that, I don't feel that I'm breaking the law on anything, I don't think Leah is. So I guess the biggest thing is this went, hit the media and I have family and friends that have made comments to me about this. And, you know, now that nobody's come to me saying, Mike, this is what you're doing wrong, I'd like a public apology because I have family and I have friends that think I'm breaking the law doing my job. So I guess that's, that's why I'm here today is, you know, if you're going to make a claim like that, come to us and tell us what the problem is before you go to the public. Because right now it's out in the public and I have family that think I'm breaking the law. So, thanks for your time.
Good morning, my name is John Coonery of Minnehaha County, Commissioner's, State's Attorney. Thank you, as you recall, back in September, I came before you and shared with you concerns we had from canvassing and also studying of our early election results and finding a great number of people who has been already stated are using non, non-residential business addresses as their residence address, not just their mailing address, but what they say where they live. And we have taken this information to our county they say where they live. And we have taken this information to our county sheriff. They have given it to a detective. There is an open case about this. And last week, I brought the most up-to-date information to that detective and shared with her what I have found. Through the analysis, I have given, I have given you these colored sheets as a summary, and I have the digital, the full spreadsheets you're welcome to, I can provide. I have found that over 2,700 people are using business addresses as where they say they live, which I believe is contrary to our election laws. And so I'm bringing this to you. And down towards the bottom here, it gives more information. This is through last Friday, the most current information that I'm providing you. There are thousands of absentee ballots sent in with addresses of businesses using mail-in businesses, hotels, and campgrounds. And this is the breakdown. 2,400, 113, and 207 for a total of 27, 20 people that have sent in their mail-in ballots that are using those types of addresses. And this 12,300 mail-in, or early ballots is actually including people who are walking in here. And, and so actually, the mail-in ballots, and Yuakava is about 6,200 mail-in ballots. And if you take that and divide that into 2,700, it's almost 44%. 44% of the people who are mailing absentee are using business addresses they do not live at as their residential addresses. On the back page here that I'm sharing with you, I raise these concerns because my understanding with both South Dakota and federal election laws requires people to use truthful information when they are registering to vote. And only the people that register to vote can vote. And as, as already stated today, under declaration that they are subject to being charged with perjury, they are saying that they are a citizen and that they have maintained residence in South Dakota for at least 30 days prior to submitting the registration form. And I believe that this is demonstrably false, what these people have done. I take this so seriously that I talked to my pastor about this. And as one who's accountable to God, and I believe I will give account to God one day, as we all will, he says that I must take this seriously and take action, legally, lawfully, responsible action. And he also shared with me, because I believe that people in such places understand that if they become aware of people that have committed a felony and do not take action or try to hide it, they too can be charged with what's called misprison of a felony. I'm not going to read those statutes, but there are federal and state statutes to that effect. So I am bringing these to authorities here and, and to our sheriff. I have done my part. I will not stop, but I will share the information with those people who will listen, and I will pray. I was woken up on Saturday night, Sunday morning to pray for you. And that's okay. But maybe there'll be some nights that you'll be thinking about this as well. And I'm sharing this information with you that in the sincere intent that you will take this seriously, that you will take the steps that is required of you as your sworn duty, and that you will be standing up for the voting rights of true citizens of this state. And I thank you for your time.
I also want to speak on the matter that my husband just finished. My name is Mary Lou Coonery. I live in Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. One thing that John mentioned was that the number of people that are voting, and they're not legal residents. But I also wanted to point out that we are having people voting on issues that concern Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County that are being decided by people who don't live here. And they're also affecting what, what candidates get to be on the ballot when it comes time to vote in November. They are also affecting what amendments and measures get passed. And not only that, these people claim Sioux Falls as their residence, but they live outside of the state, all over the United States, and in 22 countries. Okay? And some of these people may be living in California, or Colorado, or New York, or Florida, where they have high insurance rates, car insurance rates. They get in an accident in California, where I know they have high insurance rates, because I used to live there, but yet they have a Sioux Falls address. And so when insurance companies look into the matter and pay these accidents, okay, it also affects the insurance rates of people living in Sioux Falls, because they are listing Sioux Falls as their address. And so insurance companies are becoming aware of this, and they are canceling people who are listing Sioux Falls as their address when they don't live here. And they're canceling their insurance policies. But in the meantime, it also can increase the insurance policies that people here in Sioux Falls pay for. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Meyer, Minnehaha County. May I remind you that on September 10th, Commissioner Kipli boldly stated that the Minnehaha County auditor was breaking the law and demanded her resignation. So once again, I am up here to ask for clarification on what law or laws the Minnehaha County and the elections coordinator are breaking. Leah immediately requested a meeting to resolve the issue. Commissioner Kipli refused. Commissioner Karski and State's Attorney Bog said without Kipli's participation, there was no need to meet. Kellaland News was here. So everybody out there, Mike just got done saying, everybody out there thinks that they're breaking the law, and nobody here is making any move to correct that situation. To date, Commissioner Kipli has not brought forth any proof or evidence of what law or laws the editor and the elections coordinator are breaking. I also need not remind you that along with these accusations, Commissioner Kipli also called Leah some very disturbing names. I have them written down here, but I decided not to repeat them. They aren't worth repeating. And then when I brought forth, this forth on October 7th meeting, Commissioner Kipli denied saying it by saying he had no idea what I was talking about. That's another lie. And you guys are just going to let this go, Commissioner Kipli? Are you proud of what you're doing here? You're destroying the commissioner's good name. So I ask once again, what laws has the auditor broken? They deserve an answer. We deserve an answer. Either present the information or take disciplinary action and issue a public statement saying as such. You got to set the record straight here. You have a commissioner that is destroying a person's credibility. It's not funny. I know you think it is, and you think I'm a moron, because you shake your head. Destroying a person's credibility and influencing public opinion by abusing your power as a commissioner is unforgivable, and something needs to be done. I didn't start this conversation. The accusations were made and never retracted. Commissioner Karski and Vice Commissioner Bennega, why are you covering for Commissioner Kipli? A chairperson has responsibilities. By you allowing these accusations to go unanswered and refuse to clear up this matter and remain silent and to tell me that you have no responsibility to answer to the public, says a lot about your character. It's sad that you allow Keetla Leah's character and good name to be slandered. Can I have the overhead for a second, please? Okay, so this does not fit. And for the public that doesn't see this, it says, "Truth does not mind being questioned. A lie does not like being challenged." That seems to be what we have here.
Interrupt public comment for a moment. Are we having a problem with the live video feed or stream?
Commissioner, we are. It's, we're having a technical problem back there. No livestream this morning.
I saw the IT director go in there, so I figured there must be something going on. Okay, something we're going to be able to get fixed going forward.
Kelly, we've had some challenges over the last couple meetings. We may need some new equipment.
Alrighty. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jean Childs. I live in Lincoln County. I live across the street from Minnehaha County, so I practically live in this county and am affected by everything that happens, as well as everything, everybody in the state of South Dakota is affected by everything that happens here. Please work with us during this election period to assure election integrity. Please keep in mind that all of us will be accountable. This includes all members of the Minnehaha County Commission. You will be held accountable for your actions. Those who committed treason against our republic will be prosecuted to the full extent of the law. Please work with us. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Hi, Chris Swanson, Minnehaha County Treasurer. Just, I was listening to this on Zoom downstairs, and so I just wanted to come up real quick. And you're talking about the PMBs. I do think this is something we should get together as a group and visit about, because I am a little bit concerned about that, too. We keep gaining more and more personal mailbox, I guess you would call them businesses, that are coming into our area. So more and more people are getting their vehicles and their registrations coming in, because obviously they can get them cheaper through South Dakota. And we're getting a lot of them coming from California, New York, and Colorado, and quite a few from Texas, too. And I did to speak to one of the legislators a while back, and I told him my concern about this, because it does get to be when they get a, you know, an ID. Now, they can vote in our county. But the thing is, is I, I'm just, I worry about this, because it's like, as somebody had stated, too, they don't know the issues of our state. They just get, know that they can vote in our state. And my question to this, too, is, so how well are they being monitored back in their own state? So they'll come to South Dakota, and I'm just, this is, I don't know if this is true. I'm just saying, if they vote in our state, and then they go back to their state, and there's no record of, well, now they voted twice. I, I don't know if that's happening, but I'm just saying, is, that could be a possibility. So I am a little concerned about it. I know, I talked to the Department of Revenue about this, too. They said, and it's, it's a major source of revenue. It's good. I mean, it's wonderful what we're getting, from what I heard from the Department of Revenue. We're making a lot of money on these PMBers. But I, I do think we need to sit and visit as to, maybe we need to figure something out here. Because it just keeps happening. We just keep getting more and more business down in the treasurer's office, and it's all of it, it's all out of state. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Yeah, if you don't mind, as an elected official, can you tell us or the public, are they violating any county ordinances by doing this? Is this a state legislative issue?
I think it's a state, I think it's a state legislative issue, honestly. As far as, you know, violating any ordinances, I, I, you know, we're on the honor system here. It's like, oh, I spent the night in the campground. Now I'm, I'm a resident of South Dakota. We're not asking to see proof of that. I mean, and if we are, is it true? You know, I mean, you've got, you've got people from California, New York, said they spent the night at a campground. I kind of question that. You know, I can't say they didn't, but, but I do think this is a legislative issue that, that needs to be addressed.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, you bet.
Good morning. Jessica Pollam, I'm in Minnehaha County. If you'd like to see the ordinances and laws that are being broken by what Chris and the rest of them were talking about, you can visit with us. We have thousands and thousands and thousands of documents proving all of the violations of the codes, the state residency laws, the state election law, the federal election law, the voter registration forms, the city and county zoning ordinances, the, for claiming a residence, how many people can live in a residence. We have that all off of the government websites. The fraud is unimaginable. It is at a humongous level all across the state. I think it's District 35, over 50% of the voters in District 35 are unverifiable PMB phantom voters. They don't live there. We have campground owners, hotel owners, business owners, Staples, FedEx, UPS store, who have all said that these people do not live there. They are not actually supposed to be getting their mail sent there. So there is, if there was justice and such thing as enforcing the law here, there'd be thousands, thousands and thousands of people getting arrested for committing perjury on their voter registration forms, felonies for committing election fraud. And we've been here for four years now. And every last one of you is liable. You're signing off on this. You have done nothing with the evidence we've given to you. And now you will be guilty of treason, along with the rest of the people across the country that have let this happen. It doesn't have to be in a blue city. It doesn't have to be in a blue state. It's red, blue, it doesn't matter. A vote is a vote. One person's vote should count. My vote's not counting here, because we have thousands of unverified, perjured voters that have blatantly committed perjury. You can go back to the 2019 South Dakota News Watch article, and the title of it is, Google it, it comes up on Argus Leader, "Thousands of Voters in South Dakota Don't Live Where They Say They Do." 2019 South Dakota News Watch article. And it says that the legislature and all the county officials, and everybody knows that this is a problem, they know that they're lying, but, again, why do they let it come through? Millions of dollars of revenue. So the sanctity of our elections and our United States Constitution and our South Dakota Constitution has been sold out for greed and for love of money. And shame on every last one of you for letting that continue to happen. You're liable, not just under the law, but under the eyes of God. And I have a video on our Rumble channel, if you want to go look up our Rumble channel, anybody that's watching, not online, because for some reason it's not working today. When we post this video, this, this county commission was talking about it. Jean Bender was here, I think you were here. And it was said in that county commission, they, you guys all know this is happening, but we'll take the money now and worry about the votes later. What we're about to see on November 5, the results of that mentality, we'll worry about the votes later. Well, it's coming to our doorstep on November 5, and you better think long and hard before you certify that election, because we will challenge. Thank you.
All right. Looks like we're done with public comment. We'll move on to commission liaison reports.
Mr. Chair, I'll just hop on top of Scott Anderson's comments about upcoming public comment sessions for the comprehensive plan, also hoping we can get that on the agenda here. I think it'd be Tuesday, November 12th. We'd have a commission meeting, possibly get a briefing on a couple of those key topics, and also allow that to function as a comment period for Sioux Falls residents. But happy that Scott's got those scheduled in Brandon, Dell Rapids, and Hartford. But that's all I've got from planning and zoning.
All right. Move on to non-action commission discussion. I've got one thing. I'm upset right now. I spent six years active duty in the Air Force. I'm being accused of treason. I'm being told I need to do something. Nobody tells me what I'm supposed to do. I don't prosecute laws. I'm a county commissioner. Okay? So I'm, my character's being questioned? my character is being questioned? Totally out of line. If this commission can tell me, you know, I'm looking to my commission members, this is non-action commission discussion. Commissioners, are you aware of anything we can do for all these allegations? I look forward to you helping me out here. I mean, we're getting all this stuff that people are breaking laws. I don't prosecute laws. Okay? I'm not an attorney, and I'm not law enforcement. Somebody can help me out here. I'd love to hear the answer. Commissioner Bender?
I can understand your concern. I will tell you that I have, after we got some information yesterday via email, that I reached out to the sheriff, and I reached out to our other law enforcement partners, and that they were clear that they had received this information, and that they had turned it over to the appropriate officials involved that, and the state and federal counterparts have been involved. And so, it's being handled as any other report of a crime, and it's under consideration right now by the people who do have authority to take action about it, if they, if that is deemed appropriate. So, I have done what we can do to look out, to make sure that, that law enforcement officials are looking into this matter.
Mr. Chair, I would just say that the controlling function here, when it comes to voting, is going to be federal law. So, I think we'll, we'll end up seeing this litigated. And that was the thrust of my comment the other day, that this auditor office and this approach to elections is litigation waiting to happen. So, it is going to, whether they're going to challenge the results of the election, or challenge these particular precincts, I mean, that's inevitable. Also, when you're throwing out accusations against some of my constituents about their perjury, I could anticipate litigation in that direction, too. I just don't think people filling out forms under their federal constitutional rights are going to, they have the right to vote. I just, I don't, you could go to our counterparts at the state legislature. And I would just note, the truth can stand on its own, but a lie doesn't like being challenged. So, I see why you're trying to come back at me right now. So, I think the proper forum for this would be the state legislature. It is a cost-benefit analysis. Do we want to be a low-cost state that's attractive to people to reside and domicile in? If I was an employee of the Department of State and was gonna live overseas, or a contractor overseas, but I'm a United States citizen, I have federal constitutional rights. Where would I like to domicile? I'm a member of the military. I'm gonna be stationed overseas, or I need a home of record to travel while I'm, there are so many valid reasons that people are using these mail forwarding services, and none of that is even acknowledged by the folks that bring this up. There isn't any sense of self-contemplation of, maybe I could be the one that's wrong. It's never contemplated. It's always a result-oriented situation. And so, we will find out results on November 5. And we'll follow the process from there. But I just think we have to, we as a body that have the floor right now, and I know, I know a lie doesn't like being challenged.
One second, Commissioner. If you continue to act out, I'm gonna ask you to be removed. I'm just, you got one more try.
Mr. Chair, I would just wrap up my thoughts with, this is federal constitutional law, fairly elementary. If it has to be litigated in the courts thereafter, we'll let that follow its course. But I think the state legislature needs to make the trade-off public policy decision of, do we want to be a low-cost state that attracts people to register their vehicles and do different things here? Or we could raise those fees, and we could raise those costs, and we could drive those people away. But that's a state legislative public policy decision. And as to the law, good luck in federal court. So, that's all I have on the matter.
Thank you, Commissioner. Again, I take umbrage at being accused of treason. It is something that I will not sit still for.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner?
Before we close?
No, you are done. You've had your public comment. This is commission, non-action commission discussion.
I'm also a veteran of three years during the Vietnam War, so I'm not gonna be accused of something that I have not done.
Nobody accused you of anything, sir. Please sit down.
And make accusations.
Okay, I'm gonna shut down non-action commission discussion. I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, we are adjourned.